I call to order the January 8, 2018, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please rise with the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, approval of minutes of December 14, 2017, joint meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes of the December 14, 2017, joint meeting as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Great, thanks. Second item, approval of minutes of December 18, 2017, regular meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes of the December 18, 2017, regular meeting as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Bill?
I was absent, it says present on here, so.
Okay.
The 18th meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Abstain? Yep, thank you. It's past the hour of 7 o'clock, we have Bill Frayer, Town Auditor, presentation of fiscal year 2017 audit report. Welcome, Bill.
Thanks for having me back. So this is to wrap up, I guess, yet another year for the audit for 2017, and we have a little presentation, I think you have copies in front of you if you need that. The highlights, which are on the sheet, I'd just like to mention every year that we did not have to make any audit adjustments, meaning changing the numbers on your general ledger, other than when we convert from the budgetary and state basis to the GAAP presentation. There were no material weaknesses or deficiencies, significant deficiencies in internal control. There were no reportable conditions noted on the compliance with laws and regulations. These are all the things that are required to review during the audit. The audit report was unqualified. And the big change this year, I'm just going to swing around a little bit, is GASB-74, which was implemented for OPEB. We have two GASBs, one this year, one next year, both on OPEB, and they've changed. GASB continues to evaluate these liabilities, continues to issue new statements, continues to change things. This year, 74 impacted your trust fund, the fund you have that you're funding through annual contributions. Next year, it's going to affect the liability. Again, you're in the same boat as everybody. This is sort of a moving target, you know, they're trying to refine this, there's a lot of assumptions, big assumptions being made in the OPEB liability. So GASB is just trying to address that. I think that will continue on an ongoing basis where there'll be tweaks both to the OPEB and pension requirements, because they are such a large number, but they are based on so many significant, I guess, assumptions. And the other thing, I probably have mentioned this before, but, you know, you look at this and you think, oh, that's a great list, and, you know, we see it every year, but I do have clients that have material weaknesses that I've identified. I do have clients that have significant deficiencies, so, you know, this is a good report, and it's not that everyone gets this report. So I think you can be grateful, and the management team, I think, can be proud of those results. First set of numbers. There's a lot of numbers on here, and I'm obviously not going to go into a lot of detail about the specific numbers, but we'll take any questions if you have them. I like to show this because the general fund is obviously your largest fund, it's the biggest set of numbers in the financial statements, and so this provides the revenues and expenses for the general fund. The revenues, including the transfers that come in from other funds to help fund the budget. You know, from a bond rating agency perspective, they like to see consistent growth, manageable growth, they don't like to see anything too high or too low, and so when you're in about a 3% to 5% range, that's a good thing. So again, there are reasons why certain years, the percentages were up or down, but overall, this shows what you want to show to the bond people, which is consistent, manageable, reliable growth. And again, there's notes there if anybody wants to look at specific years and specific changes. The other thing I should mention is, these are the numbers in the financial statement, so they're going to be a little different than some of the things you may see internally when you look at the budget, because there's GAAP adjustments that I have to make, but they're fairly consistent, and the changes should be fairly consistent from year to year. The next slide. So these are the budgetary results, and I like to show how you did, again, this is the general fund, how you did budget to actual, and you can see, we're always targeting that 2% range, you know, plus or minus 2% range. We try to have both the revenues and expenses, you don't want to be too close to budget, because then things get too tight, but you also don't want to have, you know, 5% or 6% over budget, because then you could say, well, we've got to be better at, you know, estimating our revenues and expenses. So this is a good set of numbers, you're sticking around that 2% average. The free cash, we've talked a lot about that over the years, you've moved to a model where you're trying to be consistent with the use of free cash that goes towards the budget, and then using the excess to fund your capital items in the Capital Projects Fund. So, and that last column of numbers, the amount that goes to the Capital Projects Fund is really dependent on the free cash that gets certified by the state. The next slide. I'm going through this quick, but if anybody has any questions, please stop me. So the bond rating agencies like to look at what the town has for its reserves, and the reserves are usually defined as free cash and stabilization, and what the bond rating agencies like to see is that third column, the percentage of budget, to be somewhere in the 10% to 15% range, so you're staying within that. The town's own objectives, budget goals, are to have you stick around that 8.5% after the subsequent town meeting use. So you've, you know, again, because of the previous slide where you see the use of free cash, you're basically trying to stay within that 8.5% at the end of the year, and you've done well with that. That's a good set of numbers. These are the major liabilities, OPEB liability, the OPEB trust fund, and the pension liability. And again, the OPEB liability itself is going to kind of be a little bit of a moving target, because assumptions are constantly changing, the rate of return, the return on investments. The good news is that middle column, which is the trust fund, is growing, and you can see, you started putting in $500,000 a year, starting in 2015. You can see that in 2017, it grew by almost 700,000. So you made an extra $200,000 on the million dollars that was in there. So it was a good year for return after a year before, which was much more, it was a much smaller return in 2016. So you're going to get the benefit, not only of putting that extra $500,000 in every year, but you're going to get the interest, and that interest hopefully will grow over time. The pension liability, we talked about before, that's sort of in control of Worcester Regional Retirement System, and you're funding that through increased assessments through 2035. 34, June, or 35?
2035.
2035. The debt, we've talked about this as well, the debt is coming down, except for the school project, your debt is coming down. If you look at this, there was an increase of $5 million in debt over the five years, but without the school project, the debt would have actually gone down by $8 million, and that's because you have the free cash policy in place that is using the free cash to limit the borrowing to major items. Is there anything else, June, coming up with borrowing, besides the school?
No, we expect to issue $2.5 million in the spring, spring of 2018, which is really a lot of sewer enterprise projects mainly.
Okay.
And Church Street project, which is general fund.
And then the last slide is the fixed assets, and again, this just shows that the town has the ability to continue to invest in its capital, infrastructure, buildings, equipment. There's a bigger change over the five years than you would normally see, but again, that's because of the school project. But even without the school project, both of those numbers at the bottom, the 6.5% and 7%, would have been up by about 1%. So you're able to keep up with depreciation, which is a big thing, and you're able to invest because of the, basically because of the free cash policy. So that's a very quick and dirty review.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Bill. Sure. Board members, comments or questions? Jeff?
Just a comment that, you know, this is almost getting a bit monotonous, it seems, year to year, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
You know, this type of thing, we don't want it to be sensational, and so just thank, June, your crew, and, you know, the rest of, John, the rest of your team, I mean, it's a great report, so thank you.
Bill?
The financial team always makes us look good, is the bottom line, right, Jeff? I mean, it's great, it's always great news to have such...
It's good to be boring.
Yes, it's good to be boring, as they say, yeah. So thank you for that, Bill.
Leslie?
Thank you very much for all your work on this, and John, I, obviously, this is great, having this kind of presentation, because it once again shows that we want to be transparent, and everybody knows what's going on here, there's nothing that's being hidden, and this is just sensational, once again, well, sensational in a good way, not that way. Boring, actually, thank you. I just had one question, getting back to the GASB-74 and OPEB, you mentioned a couple times that there's some assumptions that are being made, and it's a moving target and that sort of thing. Is it, do you envision it being a moving target to the point where it's more advantageous for communities in any way? Is there anything that will ease up on us?
It's hard to tell. You know, the big assumptions are really what you can make over time on the money that you have in the bank, inflation, the cost of healthcare in the future, so, you know, it can go your way. You know, if you had a lot of money in the bank and interest rates went up, you'd benefit because you have more money to invest at that point. There might be other bad sides to that, like when you borrow, but for the OPEB liability itself, that would be good. I think part of what happened to, is when, you know, this was new, back in '09, the OPEB was '09, and the pension liability, in terms of it having to go on your books in '15, and I think there was, there were some overly optimistic assumptions that the actuarial profession was using, and the accounting profession was okay with. You know, for a long time, people were using like an 8% rate of return, which, you know, there was a time when that was probably likely, but is a little too aggressive, so you see the discount rate being pushed down, seven, you know, 7 and 3/4, 7 and 1/2. If we stay in this super-low interest rate phase longer, they could push that down more, unfortunately, as that gets pushed down, the liability goes up. So I know it's frustrating for a board that's trying to get their hands around this, and trying to fund it, and say, all right, what's our plan, and how many years do we have to go, and then all of a sudden, I come in and say, or your actuary, let's blame the actuary. The actuary comes in with a new report that says, oh, well, you know, you did everything right, but your liability went up. I know it, you know, it is one of John's favorite issues to talk about because of that, but it is what it is, you know? Both pension and OPEB are just significantly dependent on these assumptions, and we don't know, obviously, the future rate of growth of healthcare. It could come down, it could get a lot worse, you know, and that impacts, obviously, the OPEB liability, so it's a long-winded answer, did not give you an answer, but really, it could go either way. Right now, it's not working to your advantage, but to try to remember, Northborough's in the same position as every other town. You're probably in a slightly better position, because a half a million dollars a year in the trust fund is much better than a lot of other towns are able to do. So you're building up, and as I said when the slide was up, as that gets bigger, obviously, what you're earning on that gets bigger, and all of that helps, you know, all of that helps to reduce the net liability. That's sort of the best I can do.
That's great, I appreciate that, thank you very much, and thanks to the finance team as well. Great work, thank you very much.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll just add my comments, Bill, which is, thank you very much, as always, for a very thorough review and everything, and to the financial team for all the work you do to continue to provide such exceptional service and management of our budget. You know, if you go back eight years now, or something, town administration working in conjunction with the Selectmen Financial Planning Appropriations Committee to put in place a lot of the financial policies that we have, and it's nice to see, you know, not only a single-year audit report that's very exceptional, but a succession of them that really validates the principles we've put in place and the continuing excellence of the management team we have in place to do this work, so.
And I think as someone who sees a lot of, you know, a lot of towns, obviously, the establishing those goals and establishing those benchmarks, and kind of holding everybody accountable, has really been a big part of producing a good set of numbers like this, definitely.
Excellent. John, any comments?
How can I not comment? I would just say, first of all, I do want to recognize by name Jason Little, our town accountant, who is, has so much to do with the preparation of the statements and the controls, so that we have an unqualified management letter. But I think the beauty of this is, you get this information from your financial team on an annual basis every December. We do the financial trend analysis, we look at all the same indicators that Bill just went over, which are the same indicators that the credit rating agencies are looking at, and what you got tonight is an independent validation of the information that you just received from your financial team back in December, in terms of where we are on these key measures. You know that our revenues and expenditures are consistently on target, plus or minus 2%, that's very difficult to do, that our reserve levels are consistently maintained at 8.5% in accordance with our policy, that our OPEB and pension liabilities are being addressed, that our debt levels are very manageable, just below 6%, and the policy is 5% to 10%. More importantly, we're issuing debt for the right reasons. We're not issuing debt for trucks, we're issuing debts for rehabbing an elementary school, or a senior center, or a library, or what will come up next will be the fire station. And again, through these policies, we aren't doing this by a shell game. We're continuing to invest in our equipment, in our buildings, in our infrastructure. Our pavement management plan is being funded and implemented, so again, I always say, I can, we say this all the time, you know, if this board wanted to play games and gimmicks, we could lower everybody's taxes for several years, or have virtually no increases, well how do you do it? By not taking care of your equipment, investing your infrastructure, by using one-time revenue, all the stuff that our policies, the rules of engagement that we all agreed to follow, keep us from doing that. And so what you get are consistent numbers, and more importantly, they're real numbers. There's no shell game, there's no gimmicks happening here. So I just, it speaks to the longevity of the people on this board, and on the other advisory boards and committees, going back 10 years. I think you are all involved in these policies that have provided these consistent results now for almost a decade, and it's that leadership and that consistency, because it's really hard to stay true to your principles and your policies when there's pressure to add staff, or to add services, or to do things. We always make sure that it fits the full picture of what it is we agreed we were going to do as a group, and it says a lot about you as a board, and the other boards and committees in that consistency. So I thank you for that support, because the financial team couldn't do this without that policy support at your level. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. Bill, we look forward to seeing you next year with a carbon copy of what you brought in the series.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
It's past the hour of 7:15, and we have Municipal Naming Committee, proposal to name conservation land at Zero Green Street, parcel ID 026.0-0002-0000.0, Shunder's Field.
Mr. Chair, on behalf of the naming committee, I was hoping that I could just take maybe five minutes and just give you some background on the committee and on the process that has been followed. The purpose of the municipal naming committee is to propose naming suggestions for non-school public facilities and public places. The committee members are appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and by charter, the committee consists of two members of the Board of Selectmen and three citizens. The current members of the committee are Dana Lab and Jim Bruce, both of whom had other engagements tonight, Andy Dow, who's here, Leslie Rattan, and myself. You know, from the beginning, as the committee was stood up, you know, we all felt that it was really important that folks become involved and are involved in the process, and had the opportunity to provide naming suggestions. In an effort to spread the word, notices were sent out by a variety of different methods, email to town subscribers, posting on the town's website, posting on cable TV, and we actually did a couple of press releases to the local media outlets, and we're happy to report that that was successful. We did receive a number of suggestions and inquiries, and among these were questions concerning the senior center and the library, and really, the correspondence we received on those were more about the process, rather than, you know, definitive suggestions. You know, folks were asking really general questions about, for instance, naming specific sections of the library and the senior center, because this is really, it's new to us as well. We met with both the director of the library and the senior center director, to, one, get a better feel of, you know, how they would like to proceed, and to start working on guidelines for the future. We're still working on that, it's kind of a work in progress, and as we go down the road, we'll continue to report on it. We also received suggestions for specific naming opportunities, particularly for the Town Common Project. Several people made suggestions, and really, after discussing these with the committee, the general consensus was that, you know, at this point in time with the state that the Town Common Project is in, that it would be premature at this point to go about naming it. We'd like to wait and see, you know, once the project's further defined, you know, further along, and at that point, start entertaining naming suggestions. So really, on the Town Common, it's, stay tuned. And really, that brings us to tonight. The committee did receive a proposal to formally name the conservation land at Zero Green Street. This land was purchased by the town in 2012, and the proposal was to name it in honor of John Shunder. What I'd like to do now is ask Andy Dow to come forward, and he will present the formal proposal to the board.
Thank you, Jeff, Mr. Chair, members of the board, pleased to be here tonight on behalf of the committee. So as Jeff explained, the Municipal Naming Committee would like to propose naming the town conservation land on Green Street in honor of the late John Shunder. John was a lifelong resident and longtime town employee, retired as the director of the DPW in 2006, after 34 years of service. The list of his accomplishments are extensive. Many of the parks and memorials in town are a direct result of his efforts and leadership. Improvements made at Asbit Park and construction of the Ellsworth-McCape Park and Fields were both a direct result of John's leadership. John made certain that all public recreation space was well-maintained and upgraded as needed. John, a veteran himself, helped design many of the memorials in town that honor those who have fallen in service to our country, and in doing so, he was not above spending money out of his own pocket to make sure they were up to his standards. Not sure if Kathy knew about that. John loved Northborough. In addition to his DPW duties, John was instrumental in starting the lacrosse program at Algonquin and volunteered several seasons as varsity lacrosse coach. There was no one who has shown more dedication or worked harder for the betterment of Northborough than John Shunder. He cared deeply for the town, spending much of his life striving towards that goal. The parcel in question on Green Street was in the Shunder family for several generations. During that time, they turned down many lucrative offers from developers who were eager to scoop up this property and turn it into another subdivision. Rather than watch this land be turned into house lots, the Shunders instead chose to have the land protected for the town of Northborough and future generations to enjoy. John and his family wanted the field to remain as it has since John's dad first bought it back in 1946. Preserving the parcel on Green Street was something he believed in and worked hard to accomplish. For most longtime residents of the town, the Green Street parcel has always been known as Shunder's Field. It would be a fitting tribute to John for this beautiful piece of property to be officially recognized as such. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Andy. Comments from the board? Bill?
I think it's fitting. John was a great guy, gave a lot to the town, like Andy was saying, dedicated, I mean, he'd go far and above to get things done, right out of his pocket, as Andy said, you know what I mean, sweat equity and everything, and he'd do it until it was right, and I think it's fitting, and I appreciate the naming committee for all the hard work that you guys do, too, doing this and entertaining all the different, you know, people that come up with the requests, and the names, and the parcels, and so, thank you.
Don?
I can't think of a name that would be more fitting. We all, that knew John, knew how much he gave to the town, so I think that this is very appropriate.
Leslie?
First of all, it was fun discussing this, it really was a lot of fun. He's, as everyone has said, he really had an impact on Northborough, and I think this is a great way to maintain that vitality. It's a nice reminder, it's obviously in a wonderful location for many reasons, makes a lot of sense for it to be named after him, but it's just a wonderful reminder of a great, great guy. So this was a fun project to talk through.
Yeah, I mean, it's no secret what I think, you know, it's, he just did a lot for the town, so.
I could add, obviously, John was involved with the town for such a long time and made so many contributions. One thing I can speak to personally actually is the lacrosse program, because two of my sons played at Algonquin in more recent years under Coach Luongo. That team, over its, the duration it's been in place, has actually been a very, very accomplished and successful team for a very long time, and it's just such a tremendous opportunity for some of the young athletes in town, a great sport to play, and it's just, you know, another accomplishment of John Shunder to have, you know, recognized that, started that program. Jeff, you were involved with the program early on, so, you know, that's just one thing I can speak to as something that certainly made an impact in my life and the lives of my sons, so, much appreciated.
All right, I was going to have Leslie read it.
So, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to formally name conservation land located at Zero Green Street, parcel ID 026.0-002-000.0, Shunder's Field, as recommended by the Municipal Naming Committee pursuant to Northborough Code 2-37-030.
Second.
Moved and seconded? All in favor? Excellent.
That's wonderful.
Thank you, Andy.
Good stuff, thank you.
Leslie and Jeff, thank you for your service on this meeting, appreciate it. And congratulations to the Shunder family, certainly a well-deserved tribute, we happy to put this in place, so.
That's awesome.
On to reports. Bill?
I think he skipped something.
He skipped something, but...
Oh, I'm very sorry.
It's an emotional evening, I know.
I'm all choked up here. It's past the hour of 7:20, we have, I'm sorry if I get the name wrong, Lesu Chaparral?
Yes.
Yes, doing business as 291 Coffee House?
Could you come up to the desk, please? You didn't get that.
I've never done this, so.
No, no problem.
Your kids were following me, and I don't know where they went. They're screaming, and I run.
We're in the hallways, don't worry about it.
We've never done it either, we're just winging it.
Says, "Request for common victory license for premises located at 291 Main Street." Could you just describe a little bit about what it is you want to do?
So I have an art studio there, where I run art classes and stuff like that, and I want to put a coffee house inside of it, so I'll serve like muffins and coffee and stuff, and it'll still be an art studio as well, so art and coffee.
Okay, just adding kind of a refreshment capability along with the art?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just, right.
Okay. Do you have any questions or anything about the...
No.
Okay, that's fine.
I never even heard of like a vic license.
Victory license, sure.
I'm so green and new to this, like, I literally like had this crazy idea popped in my head, and here I am, a year later, a year of struggle, but, you know.
And you're aware, this license would be granted with the condition licensee receives satisfactory inspections by building, fire, and health departments, and you'll be, this will disallow any carry-in...
Alcohol.
...malt or wine, BYOB. BYOB, essentially.
Right.
That would be discontinued.
Yes.
Future events, so, okay, very good. Any questions? Bill?
So is this gonna be, like, you're gonna have muffins and coffee things all day long? Or is?
Um, I don't have my hours yet, because I got two cans, like, so I don't know how. I'm just fumbling along and figuring out how I'm doing it, but, like, I'm starting at about like a 6:30 to 4 o'clock thing and seeing how it goes.
Okay. Yep. So you're not, you don't want to have any more alcoholic beverages brought in?
No, I'm not, no, I don't do the paint nights that much anymore anyways. Like, my business is sort of, a lot of times I go out to like TJ Maxx Corporation, or I go to like big businesses and stuff, that's mostly like, so I don't do the paint nights as much anymore anyways. It just sort of fizzled, I think it was a fad and it fizzled out, and I knew that when I was starting it, but.
You're just changing gears.
I'm changing gears. So I'm doing, you know, smoothies and kind of health things, too, like oatmeal and smoothies and.
Sounds good.
So people could go to Brittany's next door and have their greasy food, but if somebody in the family needs something healthy, they could come over. Or just a butter muffin.
Any other comments, questions? Leslie?
I think it's great that you're doing that. Thank you for wanting to do that in Northborough. And how do you pronounce your last name?
Sheperly.
Sheperly, okay.
Le Su, first name.
Le Su Sheperly, okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to grant a common victory license to Le Su Schaperelli doing business 291 Coffee House for premises located at 291 Main Street with the following conditions. One, that the licensee receives satisfactory inspections by the building, fire, and health departments. Two, that the licensee shall not permit any patron to carry in or, and consume alcoholic beverages in or upon the licensed premises at any time.
Second.
Moved and seconded? All in favor?
Good luck, very good luck.
Thank you.
And now, we'll proceed with reports.
There we go.
Bill, will you start us off, please?
Yes, thank you. On December 19th, at the senior center, Lieutenant, Lieutenant Governor Polito came to join us to give us a Commonwealth Community Compact Grant for $40,000 for best practices to develop a long-term comprehensive IT financial strategic plan, all in one word. How do you like that? For moving Northborough forward. It was great to have her there. She spent some extra time. There was a lot of us here from the different departments, fire chief, police chief.
Oh, boy.
And all the board members were here. John was there, Kim was there. And she spent some time with us and spoke about how proud she was of the town of Northborough, how proud she, that we have done such a great job financially in moving the town forward into the next millennium, so. It was great to see her there and great for her to spend some time with us. And congratulations for John for doing that, for us getting the pieces together for the proposal, so, thank you, John.
My pleasure.
And also, I wanted to thank the DPW on the winter storm, because we do plowing. It's the only town, besides Westborough, that the roads are in great shape. I mean, passable. I mean, every other town that we go in, even towards Boston, they were terrible. So Northborough did a great job, so congratulations to Scotty, Eric Crowe, so, thank you. End's my report.
Okay. Don?
Get on Billy's. And then, just for information purposes, the fire station building committee will be interviewing four different architects on Thursday and Friday of this week, hopefully making a, a decision on Friday. So that's going to be interesting to see the architects and see what they come with, their very preliminary talks with us, because, as everyone knows, it's a challenge to look at this fire station right now and try to figure out if it's gonna stay where it's gonna be, or if we're gonna have to find a new location. So it's an exciting project, and I'm looking forward to meeting with everybody on Thursday and Friday. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Don. Leslie?
Okay. We received a memo from Chief Parenti about the Lowe's of Westborough donation, which I thought was really neat.
Yeah, it was very nice.
For a couple of reasons. One, it wasn't impromptu, and two, Lowe's is in Westborough. If I could, I'd like to just read the little paragraph, rather than trying to paraphrase. It's just a quick paragraph that he said. "A recent project undertaken by Captain Desatelle was to upgrade the toolbox and tool cache in Rescue One. Captain Desatelle's and firefighter Peters were at Lowe's in Westborough putting together a shopping list when the store manager, Mr. Paul Osborne, approached them and asked about the project they were working on. After they informed him of what they were doing, Mr. Osborne donated the following items to the department to facilitate the project." So it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, about 10 items, for a total of almost $600. And that's impressive, because he obviously wasn't saying, "Well, you know, this department's not in Westborough, so I'm not interested." So that really says a lot about them, and if somehow you could pass along from our board that.
We've sent a thank you, a huge thank you note to them, but I will make sure we pass it on as.
Yeah. That was impressive and very kind. It was great. So thank you for letting us know about that. And I just wanted to mention, too, that we, I've gotten notes from several residents, and I've seen many comments on Facebook about what the DPW had done on Christmas Day, and also the most recent storm. I think Christmas Day really rattled a lot of people because they felt really bad for you guys. And because of the timing, obviously, and this last storm was just amazing, and once again, a really fantastic job. How do you find the fire hydrants, by the way? I find them to be, what condition? Are, are they okay?
Not quite as much fire hydrant maintenance by the residents as I'd like to see.
They need to be shoveled out.
Yeah, that's absolutely.
I shoveled mine the other day.
Good man. Far more than a snow it in than not.
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
Saying, saying it lightly.
Do they all have the, I don't know how tall those poles are, okay.
A lot of them have snow blower discharge all over them.
Is that our job as residents to shovel them out?
It's not, it's not a bylaw requirement, but it's.
It's common sense.
It's why I walk three houses down in my neighborhood to clear that hydrant.
Huh? To save your own house, right?
Yeah, and the three people between.
I know, that's your big plug, so to speak, every year.
It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that your house catches on fire, it might be nice to have a hydrant.
Yep.
Miss a mail once in your mailbox, it'll clear your mailbox from curb to curb, side to side, but fire idols will sit there.
Yeah. That's true. But thank you very much. Please thank your staff.
I'm glad to write that up.
Yeah, wonderful, wonderful job. Also, John, I just want to ask you again about these sign, "Welcome to Northborough" sign.
In terms of the.
The Eagle Scout.
Eagle Scout.
Have they been informed?
My understanding is that they, they, it's been so much time that they have been unable to locate who it was.
There's, there's a current scout coordinator who directs Eagle Scout projects toward the DPW that want to work with the DPW. I reached out to him on two occasions, asking him specifically about that sign, if you could get in touch with that Eagle Scout or had records of it. I haven't heard anything back.
Okay. Well, you've asked a question, which is good. I just, it's just, to me, it's a sign of courtesy to let this person know.
Absolutely.
Those are great projects, and they come to the town for support and the okay to do it, so.
He was able to find the Eagle Scout who built the historic cemetery map at Howard Street, that enclosure there, because we were redoing the headstones at Howard Street.
Yeah.
And that Eagle Scout's father still had his old computer CPU in the basement, was able to take, so it, some are hit and some are missed, so.
Wow. Okay. So it's either troop one or 101, one of those two, two, but, okay, if you, if you hear anything, let me know. I'd be curious, just that way he knows what happened. And thank you for the monthly reports and the summaries on those, very informative and helpful, police and fire. So thank you very much. That is my report.
Not to pile on the DPW, but, you know, great job. I'd also like to thank the, both the police and fire department. You know, we happen to have the scanner on during these storms, and these guys are going round the clock. It, I mean, it wasn't quiet for five minutes, you know, between cars off the road, medicals, you know, limbs down on wires. I mean, I heard one call go in, that somebody thinks they heard a branch go down. Can you check and see if it hit the wires? I'm like, you know, it's just, it's amazing, the, the calls that you guys get and, you know, the response, so, you know. DPW, you guys do a great job. Fire and police, you do, too. So please, you know, let your teams know. Quick change of subjects. During the holiday season, the Algonquin community puts on a food and toy drive. And I just wanted to quickly, you know, highlight, you know, what these guys accomplish. It's, it's really, it's a joint effort between the faculty and the students. And I asked my in at the, at the school to get me some stats today. And for the holiday season, they donated 50 boxes of food to individual families, complete with gift cards. They, they collected $3,790, which was converted into gift cards from Stop &amp; Shop for needy families. And they collected toys and gift cards for over 300 children who are in foster care. That, to me, is an amazing number, an amazing effort.
That's great.
By the folks at Algonquin, so.
That's great.
I just wanted to see that they, you know, that people understand that. You know, it seems like a lot of times in today's world, we hear about stuff that kids aren't doing. And, you know, these, you know, young men and women are doing a lot, and I think it should be noted, so, thank you to them. And I'm gonna mention again, shovel your hydrants and your sidewalks. That's my report.
All right. Thank you very much, Jeff. I've got a number of items here, atypically. Happy New Year to everybody. We're welcomed by the storm events, and I want to thank Public Safety and DPW for all the work that they did over these last few days, too, particularly Thursday with the snowstorm that came in. They had the additional fun of dealing with a water main break over in Northgate, so, as if it wasn't fun already, we had a little bit of a cherry-on-top kind of situation there. As Bill mentioned, signing the Community Compact Agreement with Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito. Again, thank you to John for having the initiative to hunt that down for us and secure the funding. This is the initial stage, which will be used for information technology strategy development, but it also makes us eligible to be considered for additional funding.
Certain future potential capital grants.
For capital grants to actually implement some of the, so, it's, it's really a, potentially a multi-stage thing that we're walking into here. I had some questions about what's going on in the community. Some people asked me about the latest status of R&amp;T furniture, and the latest status is that the town is continuing to pursue that and work with the owner of the facility to try to get some resolution on the condition. At the moment, the building is secured, there's no entry, if that's correct, so, shouldn't be any risk of that, and by all assessments, there isn't any immediate safety concern that has to be addressed. We're just continuing to work to try to bring about a resolution for that, and it continues to, to be looked at. It's not just languishing, so. On the subject of the former Lowe's market that's currently being developed, I had some inquiries about what's going on there, and I didn't know the answer, so, the answer is that there's a couple who are doing the development there. They intend to run, be, believe, a bridal shop, bridal salon in the front portion, and a medical office in the rear portion. The upstairs, as far as I know at this point, is no plan to do anything other than storage, so, that's the status on that. Progress has been a little bit slow for reasons unrelated to the town, but they're potentially on track to have something operating perhaps by middle of summer. On Lincoln Street School, just the finalization of that project, all the paperwork's been submitted, negotiations have gone back and forth about what costs might still be argued as being eligible for reimbursement. And at this point, I think we've completed all the paperwork, and it's now just up to MSBA to.
We're just waiting for MSBA to do their final audit.
Yeah.
So, as is the case with all these projects, MSBA is, is good about, you know, disallowing certain things, and we make a very strong argument, successfully, I might add, to that they should be allowed as part of the reimbursement. And we've been successful in that, and that takes a little bit of time, but the, the, all the work is done, all the commissioning is done, all the paperwork is done, and it's really just a matter of MSBA doing their final audit. But I, I do stand by the estimate, and I don't want to give a specific number, but we're close to a million dollars under budget on that project.
Excellent.
That's great.
Thank you, John. And then finally, just a regular informal update on the progress of the recreational marijuana issue. The Cannabis Control Commission, which is responsible for promulgating regulations on recreational marijuana, held a series of meetings through middle, middle to late December, and then, at that point, issued their draft regulations, which are posted on their website. In response to that, we had town council look at the regulations as they're written and reevaluate our position with respect to the moratorium. And town council's opinion comes back favorably. I won't read it verbatim, but essentially, the, the, the observations are that the regulations, in part, for an application, require that the municipality be notified by the CCC and give us the opportunity to provide a response back as to whether or not the applicant is in compliance with all local ordinances and bylaws. So step one. The second part of that is that our moratorium isn't a thing apart of itself, our moratorium is, in fact, the current local zoning bylaw. It's 7 dash 10 dash 060, something.
Don't look at me, I didn't remember. I'll take your word for that.
If you look on the town code, you will find it there in the zoning bylaws. And so that is the current bylaw, a full prohibition through June 30th, 19, 2018. And that would be the bylaw that's in effect at any date after April 1st, that an applicant would submit an application to operate a recreational marijuana operation in the town of Northborough. Subject to whatever we do at town meeting, that is the current bylaw in place, and we feel, I feel comfortable, we haven't discussed this as a board, but I feel comfortable in, in our position that we are protected and there is nothing more we need to do, or nothing we need to do earlier before April 1st in order to proceed with the path that we're on in, in terms of considering zoning and general bylaws at annual town meeting in April, so. With that said, tonight is January 8. Town meeting is April 23rd. That is 15 weeks, 105 days, 2,520 hours, 151,200 minutes, and a little over 9 million seconds for everyone to prepare to resolve your conflicts for April 23rd. If you require babysitting for younger children, get your babysitters in place. If you're a parent of older children who might serve as babysitters, make them available to your friends and neighbors so that you can be at town meeting, and your friends and neighbors can also be at town meeting. If you travel for business and you have some discretion about your travel schedule, don't schedule it for April 23rd. Come down to town meeting, await the warrant article, and do your civic duty, or as Bill Belichick might put it, "Do your job."
Your job.
No, no days off.
That's the most we have for the moment. I understand the Cannabis Control Commission will be meeting tomorrow with an agenda item guidance to municipalities. I don't really know what that agenda item would entail, or whether it has any relevance to us, but I frankly would not anticipate anything significant that changes the town's stance. If there is anything notable, we'll reconsider it at our next meeting, which will be 22nd, January 22nd, so. And I believe that concludes my report. John?
I didn't report this evening.
Okay. This public comment section, anybody from the public like to offer a comment? Chief Parenti?
Just two things real quick, or three, shovel your hydrants.
Shovel the hydrants.
Number two, as the police department put out in their Facebook, when we get these really brutal cold snaps, please make sure you're checking in on your elderly neighbors. You know, making sure they're okay, making sure their heat's running, and they're all set, because we don't get a chance to see them, the police doesn't get a chance to see them. But the police very wisely put out in our, we put it out in our Twitter, but we just need to make sure that gets out there, okay? Now that we're warming up, expect to see broken pipes.
We've already had quite a few of them, but now that we're warming up and the ice melts out of the cracks that have occurred, don't be surprised to start seeing some leaking in your pipes. Call us immediately. We'll come out, we'll help you get everything shut down, we'll get hold of the building inspector or the wire, or the electrical inspector, get them out there, but that's a very, it's a much more dangerous situation than some people think about it. Well, it's just a broken pipe. Well, if it's going through your electrical system, then it's a lot more than that, so please make sure you give us a call.
Great. Thank you very much, Chief. Any other public comments? Very good. Thank you. New business. Execution of cemetery deeds, 1039 and 1040.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds, 1039 and 1040.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Thank you. And executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection 3, collective bargaining and litigation due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection 3, collective bargaining and litigation due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Bill?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Leslie?